Testing one, test. Test one. Can you hear me, Danny? Good deal.
Test one, two.
Are we good? That's good. All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. It's September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P. M., and this is the City Council meeting of the city of Wood Creek. I am calling it to order. You will bear with me and stand for a moment of silence and stay standing for the playlist. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas people, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one and indivisible.
City Secretary, call the role, please.
Mayor Jeff Rasko.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Brett Polley.
Here.
Councilmember Lania Bailey. Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Here.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Here. Thank you.
We have a forum. First order of business, we have public comments. We have four citizens who've signed up for public comments on Agenda Item Number Twenty-five. And most yielding to Mayor Pretend LeBron, and she wanted to speak at the time of the item. Is that still correct?
I did time.
Okay. All right, I'll project.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you, could we move those up so that they could leave at a much earlier time? Perhaps twenty-four and twenty-five to Mayor to the top of the.
All right, I was gonna make an agenda adjustment already, and I do think that's a good idea. I was gonna move Items Ten and Eleven, the Proclamations, up to front before the consent calendar. And I think it's, I think it's probably a good idea to go ahead and do twenty-four and twenty-five as well.
If I, one, one other thing, if we can include seven, eight, and nine on the regular instead of on the consent, because they are, I just have one comment to say about.
You can ask to pull them off the consent, but.
That's what I mean, yes.
But. Okay, we'll, we'll take that up when we go to the consent agenda. So if there's no objection, we'll make the first order of business, number ten, which is a proclamation by the city of Wood Creek, Texas, to declare the week of September. Okay, the, the week of September seventeenth through September twenty-three as Constitution Week. And proclamation reads thusly, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Rasko, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Wood Creek, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And we do have two representatives of the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution with us, Cherie Dawson and Laura Worsham. If you'd like to say a couple of words, you, you may just move sort of to the back over there with the microphone. And then we'll get, we'll also get a picture.
Yeah, you ready?
He read it, has been around since as a Constitution Week. Laura and Robert sent the jacket twelve chapters, the Daughters of the American Revolution. We've been in Wood Creek for thirty-one years, and we give this annually across the entire United States, every chapter. And we have over three thousand chapters in the United States. So we're proud to be here, we're proud to accept that proclamation from you.
Great shirt for the occasion.
This is a little more, so I need to. Great. One, two, period. One, two, three. Would you like to be a little bit?
Sure. He has a man.
And they are also proud citizens of the.
That's why. Got our eyes open. Thank you so much. Congratulations, you guys, good for being, sir, if I could care to things like this, that's weird.
Have you back? All right, item number two, and the agenda will be number eleven. On the agenda, the proclamation by the city of Wood Creek, Texas, declare September twenty-twenty-three Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilmember Hamburg.
Yes. Whereas the city of Wood Creek is a welcoming and inclusive community dedicated to improving the quality of life for our city. And whereas what began as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight was expanded to a thirty-day period by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to observe Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas the theme of this year's Hispanic Heritage Month, prosperity, power, and progress celebrates Hispanic heritage and recognizes significant strides in Hispanic, of Hispanics in economic, political, and social growth. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to celebrate and recognize the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to American culture in roles such as civil rights leaders, community organizers, first responders, healthcare professionals, teachers, artists, athletes, inventors, and entertainers, and more. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to appreciate and celebrate the colorful cultures, rich histories, and talent within the Latin American community, the Latin community, as important contributors to the U. S. culture and economy. Now, therefore, the city of Wood Creek does hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and asks our citizens to explore Hispanic culture, people, traditions, and other values that have positively enriched our community. Witnessed by Jeff Rasko, Mayor, and Susan McKenzie. So we have such a large Hispanic population here in the state of Texas that I could see no reason why we would not celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month here. So for, we only have one person, she's not prepared to speak, but she is Hispanic if there ever was. And Aurora Lebron, having.
All right, so as promised, we will move to item number twenty-four. This discuss to take possible actions and authorize city manager to award a traffic calming study on the current fund balance as soon as possible, and this is Councilmember Bailey's. Would you like to, we'd like, make the motion so we can discuss and use the microphone?
I would like to have the city manager report a traffic calming study from our current fund balance as soon as possible. What happened back in May.
Can we get a second? Oh, second.
Okay. Back in May, we had authorized the city manager to talk to the engineers about a study. Well, he did, and the price came back a little too high, and then other things got in the way. At that time, we didn't even know we were gonna get this great road contract. So it never came to the point where we authorized the funding. We did put this into our budget. Maybe I wasn't thinking, but it's just, it seems like we shouldn't put this off. We need to have the study. We're going to have all our roads completed by late October. And rather than wait until, you know, the new fiscal year, and then January, February, the weather will be inclement. So I would like to see us do this study. In addition, so we know the financial impact will be about twenty-five thousand dollars. In the handouts, there's the overall, the scope of the, of the work, and basically, it's just that K. Fries would organize meetings, review what's going on in the city, have their G. I. S. database as a function of what kind of a map they will present to us, and also their recommendations on which kind and the locations of traffic calming devices. It's there's no doubt in my mind that the Texas Manual of Uniform Traffic Calming Devices calls for a study. They are very specific and saying things like unnecessary traffic devices should be removed. Uniformity of devices simplifies the task of road users because it aids in recognition and understanding. A standard device used where it is not appropriate is as objectionable as a non-standard device. In fact, this might be worse because it might give confusion to real devices. And then it goes on to say, traffic control devices placed and maintained must conform to this manual. As far as an engineering study, it said, the decision to use a particular device at a particular location should be made on the basis of either engineering study or engineering judgment. While this tech, this manual provides standards, guidance options, this is no, this is not considered a substitute for engineering judgment. Engineering judgment should be exercised in the sec, the selection and application of traffic control devices, as well as location design. So that's, I don't think that's even hazy. They said we should have a, a study to know what's going on and where they should be placed, what types of devices. And in another supporting document is the Texas Attorney General's opinion that in addition on this, a traffic study is required prior to the installation of speed bumps. I'm also.
Read the rest of that?
What?
That's not the whole opinion.
Right, the bigger issue arises up with speed bumps is you are given that there are obstructions in the road. Cities have a duty to keep public streets free of obstructions. Erecting or placing any object, object in a public street that interferes with full and free use thereof might be considered an obstruction. The duty, this duty was originally found in Texas, revised Civil Statute ten sixteen, is now based on Transportation Code three one one, et cetera. Several cases have been cited in which the city was held liable for damages or pay and failure to remove an obstruction from a city street, from piles of gravel to roads to wet paint stripes. The risk involved is that speed bumps is that a city might be held liable for any injury or damages that can be attributed to their use, and that a court will find that other traffic control devices such as signs, flashing lights, reduced speed limits are a more reasonable method of controlling speeding. City Council wishes to place calming devices through the city, I suggest a traffic study before they're placed, traffic study by a professional traffic engineer suggesting the placement and types of devices throughout the city, rather than council members, will protect the city from additional liability. If council wishes to proceed with the purchase and installation of traffic calming devices with, without a traffic study, city staff will proceed as directed by council.
I apologize. I meant the full quote from the opinion.
Councilmember Hines. I don't think she's yielded the floor.
No, I guess she read a portion of the quote.
She hasn't yielded the floor.
Well, I almost read it.
And.
I also wanted to point out that it fought to, you know, Aaron Jones, who's helped mentor us with a lot of our road work. And he mentioned a couple of occasions, he said, do a traffic study. In part, because when somebody goes, why'd you put that there? You can say, the engineers. You know, it's a good way to lower our liability and and protect, protect the city as well as getting the most effective devices. I've looked through several cities that they're following this manual. They, their criteria are similar, they have engineering studies. I've also looked at the proposed. Oh, I've had trouble, I've had trouble hearing myself. No. I've looked at the proposed locations of five that will be on the next agenda item, and I've done a little bit of research on that, I'll bring up later, but I don't see, except for one, that they are not in conformance with these standards. So it's, it's not an issue that the study would preclude them. So that's, I really think whether we go forward with a few right now or not, for the sake of the rest of the city, and for the sake of our roads, which will be faster and probably more dangerous, we need to have a uniform study made by our engineers. And that's my proposal.
I was gonna recognize Mayor Pretend Polley, and then Councilmember Hines. Then Hamburg.
Thanks, Lania. I think we're at least finally heading in the right direction on this issue. This is something that is near and dear to my heart. I live on Wood Creek Drive. Bob, you live on Brook Hollow. You know what we're dealing with, and it's time that we, that we do something. I've had five neighbors get their mailboxes knocked down in the last six months. I can't walk across the street with my dog, you know, because of how fast the traffic is going. The volume of traffic that we have, it is dangerous. It's becoming lethal. It's time that we do something about it. We tried the radar signs, we've got Hayes County coming out twice a week, writing tickets. We've done the drive safe program, we've checked all those boxes. Sixty percent of the people in this community have told us in a survey, we want more traffic calming. And it's time for that. We have identified five spots initially, two on Wood Creek Drive, two on Brook Hollow, one on Augusta. That's a modest way to start, and we know those places need something. We don't need a traffic study to tell us that. We know that there's something wrong, and we have a solution. I'm gonna address the traffic study issue in a minute here, but let me tell you what we're talking about, the five locations, putting cushions down, which are very standard, that are used pretty much throughout the country, that are EMS compliant, that will basically adjust. If you build them, and you, you build them in such a way to where you can affect certain speeds. You know, if you go fifty miles an hour, you're gonna feel it. If you go twenty-five miles an hour, you won't notice it. So these, these are appropriate, they're what everyone else uses. The question is, what kind of engineering review do we need? And that's why I want you to look at the manual. I handed you this, right? First of all, the Attorney General opinion is essentially gibberish. Secondly, it's not binding on us. It's just simply advisory. So if you wanna know what's going on, you look to the man. You look at page two of the handout. This is what Lania was referring to. The highlighted portion. First of all, it says the manual describes the application of traffic control devices, but shall not be a legal requirement for their installation. So we know that right away. This is not a legal requirement, but we're gonna do it anyway. So what do we need to do? This tells us, look at line number three, the decision to use a particular device at a particular location should be made on the basis of either an engineering study, or secondly, engineering judgment. Those are two different things. The study is when you get a notebook this thick, and it costs you seventy-five thousand dollars. We don't need that for five blooming speed bumps. What we probably ought to do is look at engineering judgment, and what is that? If you look at the next page, this highlighted, that tells you that's where definitions start. Look at the next page, there are the definitions. You'd look number sixty-four, engineering judgment. That's basically the evaluation by the engineer, under the supervision of an engineer, but it doesn't require a formal documentation. That's the way that this manual tells us. We don't need to look to the Attorney General or T. M. L. We can look to this manual, and it tells us we can use engineering judgment. And so what my proposal is is this, first, I want you to look at the scope of work that we have right now that's on the table. That's page one sixteen. If you look at that, look at the, the second paragraph, design and bid phase. Here's what they're talking about doing. I'm sorry, look at, look at the first paragraph under the design bid phase. They're talking about area photography, lidar topographical survey, and applicable blah, blah, blah. We don't need a lot lidar topographical survey for five speed bumps. That's what the scope of work that you're being asked to vote for here. I have a better idea. If you look at the back of the handout I gave you. I have an adjusted scope. So we can't get engineering judgment as required by this manual. Here's what my proposal is. I'm gonna request that we request engineering judgment as provided by this manual, and I've, and I've referred those sections in the definition, on the final placement of the first five speed cushions outlined in our packet. That's item twenty-five, page one twenty-one. This stage shall be complete in sixty days. That's it. That's clean, that's the judgment we're looking for that allows us to move forward. So that, what I'm gonna do is make an amended motion that the city obtain engineering judgment is provided for in the manual, section one eight point zero nine, and is defined by one eight point one three, section sixty-four, on the final placement of the first five speed cushions outlined in a speed cushion proposal, item twenty-five, page one twenty-one. This stage shall be complete within sixty days. Mayor Secretary, have a copy of that motion for you.
I second. Second, if I, Councilmember. Hines was next, and then you.
I'm so sorry I interrupted. Oh, I was, I know the opinion you were reading was longer and said more. And because I, I read it and researched it myself. And so it talks about, the full opinion talks about the authority of a city to install traffic calming devices specifically on a highway was what that larger opinion was about, and we're not talking about highways. And so when it goes into the idea that a traffic coming study, or a traffic study is required prior to the installation, if you follow to John Cornyn's letter, the entire thing is about roads that don't exist inside the city of Wood Creek. That would be if we owned Ranch Road Twelve, like it was in our jurisdiction, and then we wanted to do something on that, then this would absolutely apply. But we have no county-owned roads, and we have no highways in the city of Wood Creek. Everything in Wood Creek qualifies for the installation of speed cushions, speed humps, and that type of traffic calming device because our streets are under thirty miles per hour. We have less than the max amount of vehicles that can travel under these rules when you need a traffic study and when you don't. In addition, we already have the data that a traffic study would pull, meaning we have radar signs that have been telling us how many cars we have. They tell us how fast they speed. They tell us where they're speeding. We've already collected a lot of the data in the traffic study that would, K. Fries would spend money on, our money, the citizens' money to collect data we already have. And so I support Councilmember Polley's adjustment to just move forward with engineering judgment on the first five speed cushions. With that in mind, I would also like to say that there is a stage two in his proposal here that talks about additional traffic calming measures to be studied by K. Freeze. So after these first five speed bumps, we acknowledge additional traffic study and engineering information from K. Freeze would be relevant for any additional traffic calming devices, and we list things here. It says enhancement of entrances, elevation or texture changes for golf cart paths, road striping, additional signage, rumble trips, and amplification of right-of-way green spaces are some of the options they would look at for a city our size with these roads. With that in mind, this also proposes that the additional speed cushions outside of that first five red phase could be a part of K. Freeze's overview, or the city engineer, right, that overview, and we're, I'm okay with that because in those areas, grade would be a factor in some of them. And then we also might wanna prioritize them more specifically because K. Freeze might be able to give us more information about, hey, this area, you really, really need more, and you could put this area on the back burner for a long time and give us more input on that. Um, it also says that instead of this large study, right, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, council originally just talked about paying fifteen thousand for this. We could potentially move forward with something that is a little bit less pricey and get these first five speed cushions and have our cake and eat it too. So what I'm proposing is that we also specifically ask our city engineer to kind of narrow the scope, rather than producing all of this data, they tell us exactly what our menu of options are, where council should consider placing them, and the approximate cost for the installation, including the additional engineering costs, because that's what we're forgetting to talk about this. We could pay for this massive study and this massive binder, and then we would still have the engineering judgment costs to pay for. So that's a big price ticket for something we already know citizens want, right? That citizen petition factor has been covered. We know our streets, the miles per hours are slow enough, right? So these first five, I feel pretty solid about, and what Mayor Pretend Polley has advocated for is that we get engineering judgment on the final placement specifically. So what you have in your packet is areas for consideration. And when we get to that item, I can go more in-depth into the science, the data collection that went into those selections. But I, I really do not want to hold up traffic calming devices in our most trafficked areas where people are cutting through our city. We know they're speeding, and we know they're running stop signs. Let's slow them down.
Councilmember Hamburg.
Custom member Hebert.
I appreciate the fact that that you produced this for us. This M U T T, M U T C D, manual and uniform traffic control devices written in October twenty fourteen. Um, and Mr. Pullman and I have spoken several times about the problem of traffic. And yes, we're living on Wood Creek Drive. Absolutely. There's nothing else to convince you every day. That is necessary to to maybe slow some people down. There's nothing better than than watching your car speed past you. Uh, same thing happens on Brook Hollow. Uh, maybe not, I really don't know what the speeds are because I don't have a radar sign up. Where my house is, but um, yeah, but you see it on occasion at least and it can be a great concern. Uh, I still believe that, uh, quick question if I could, for you Mr. Pullman, how much is a traffic? Uh, the judgment, uh, engineering judgment versus what we're talking about here.
I don't know. Uh, I would imagine it's certainly less than a little monster. Yeah, so I I don't know and it's something that we can we can find out.
So the the things that we've already had on the table that have already been voted on are things like we, in May, May twenty-fourth of this year. We talked about starting to do that and install somewhere along the way. And uh, most of us were pretty happy with the idea. Matter of fact, it was five oh on on the traffic study and then. Uh, since then, uh, we've been going around and around and not really gotten anywhere. We also approved four new radar sites. And I believe, and and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've seen that radar signs, when it says something like slow down. People think slow down. They, I don't know if they're on order. But it was part of our previous, this year's budget to have four on radar site. And perhaps before we we jump into all of the rest of this. We get those radar signs and see how that helps, because I think they are very effective in slowing down traffic on a regular basis. Putting one each in, one on on Augusta and perhaps one on Brook Hollow over there, one of one of those places. But it does, and it will uh change our liability situation. If we do that, because they are considered not to be as invasive as some of the other things that we thought about.
I'd like to make an amendment to the current amendment, which is to put a. Dollar limit, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Or.
The.
For the engineering judgment?
Yes.
Since my, I mean, I I don't think that an engineer can scratch his nose for five grand. I mean, I'd say ten grand.
I will withdraw and rephrase. I move or amend. To have the traffic judgment or engineering judgment not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Are that, it's a limit on it. Um, okay, we have an amendment suggested on the on the floor, seconded. Any discussion on the amendment to set a ten thousand dollar limit on on a traffic, um, judge, a traffic engineering judgment?
Those three breakbacks, if you understand, we're going back on the ladder.
Yeah, we're going back down the ladder. We got a ten thousand dollar limit. Then we have the original amendment was. To uh do the, change the scope to be an engineering judgment. Um, as provided for in the T M U T C D. Uh, manual, and then the main motion was to do uh traffic study.
Can I get a clarification on that ten thousand dollar judgment? Will that be for the five proposed right away and not for?
Well.
That was what you called it, face two.
I know, you're you're shaking your head. I would think that if we brought in. Um, someone to do a judgment, they're not gonna be doing the judgment just on the five, right? I mean, they would be taking a look. Just for the five?
Yeah, get that done. That's my motion, that's fine.
All right.
Do you need a copy of it?
No, I've got a copy of your motion. Okay, so um, so then we'll vote on uh Councilmember Grumbert's. Uh, amendment uh that the uh engineering judgment was not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Councilmember Hines.
I.
Mayor Pro Tempur Pullay.
I.
Councilmember Lina Bailey.
I.
Councilmember Chris Drummer.
I.
Councilmember Bob Hammer.
I.
All right, so the amendment passes and we're back to um, council, uh, or Mayor Pretend Pullies. Uh, motion on obtaining the engineering judgment.
Can you restate that?
Yes, I will. I was gonna, I have a copy of it.
I've got it here. The motion is that the city obtained engineering judgment as provided for in T M U T C D. One A dot oh nine as defined by one A dot thirteen sixty-four. On the final placement of the first five cushions outlined in the speed cushion proposal. Item twenty-five, page one twenty-one, this stage shall be completed in sixty days. At a cost not to exceed ten thousand.
Would this traffic judgment solve the city's liability? Yeah, for instance, anything which will occur and is it a strong label speaking as a traffic study?
I'm gonna defer to our distinct counsel on that.
I'm gonna defer to all the other attorneys in the room.
It's a heck of a lot better to have engineering judgment than to not have it. That's all, that's all I'm gonna say about that, right?
It comes down to who has the biggest insurance policy, basically. So if they got a big policy, they'll they'll be in the hunt, in the mix with us, so.
Yeah, custom member.
Um, I'm not sure when to introduce this, but I do want to mention. I looked at the map that was provided and I used the scale of miles. I paced out where I estimated these um cushions to be. I then went to Hayes County Maps. And I calculated exact measurements to the best of my ability. I also located the houses they would be adjacent to. So that I could visit each of these proposed locations and see there are certain criteria that are uniform. With the other cities I studied, like five hundred feet from five hundred feet apart. And a limited number of feet before a hazard, uh, not on a bend or a blind curve. I felt every one of them would certainly be within compliance with one exception. The one located just before the bridge on Brook Hollow. It is too close to the bridge. That would be, I feel that that needs to be reviewed and replaced. Or maybe just reviewed. That did not seem to con- conform. With the general standards I'd been reading. And if someone is distracted by that speed cushion, that's gonna be new. And they hit the bridge, we're gonna be up Hogs Creek without a pass.
I think, I, you know, I think the engineering, I mean, that's one of the things they would look at. These are, these are suggested placements. Not scientific or engineering based. I mean, this is just like based on our, you know, this like. Common sense at this point, but that would, you know, based on the this amended proposal. Um, that would be part of their.
That if they had judgments that it was different, it would be implied.
Right, exactly. Councilmember Hines.
I just wanted to clarify, as Mayor Osko said, these are areas for consideration and that one in particular, um, I had the playground in mind. Because the playground's right after the bridge, and so it wasn't clear if it should go before or after the bridge. Maybe after is what the engineers uh decide. And I'm, I mean, I think we're all open to following the engineer's judgment. And I would even reach as far to say if the engineers say this should really be moved a lot further down or somewhere else entirely, I think we would. Um, acquiesce to that. Um, so but that one in particular was, the playground was in my mind.
That's a good point. Um, any other discussion on the, on the amendment?
Here, one more. Um, just the aesthetics of. Brook Hollow, these are gonna be black patches on what has been known as the white road. So there is, there's just that consideration. I looked to see if there was any other color besides black and I didn't see it. That's all I had.
All right, we take a vote on the, on Police's amendment, please.
Councilmember Bob Everett.
I.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
I.
Mayor Pro Tempur Pullay.
I.
Councilmember Lina Bailey.
I.
Councilmember Chris Drummer.
I.
All right, so the amendment passes, we have a engineering judgment on the five. The original motion. Um, is to authorize city manager to order a traffic calm study from the current fund balance. So, um, so that motion is still on the table.
I would like to amend it to narrow down. Beyond a traffic calming study to focus on what is highlighted in stage two in particular. As proposed by Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tempur Pullay here in your packet. So to read that, it says an engineering review and report on additional traffic calming measures. So we're backing out of study and going to review and report place and um, looking at the traffic calming measures in their placement. So one would be judging the viability of placement of the yellow and blue phases of the speed cushion, selecting top priorities. And providing for that engineering judgment for final placement. Then we would ask them to review additional traffic calming measures listed here, but not limited to those. Those are just the primary options for.
Councilmember Hines, did, did you make a motion? I mean, I'm looking for a second. I'm looking, I mean, you're gonna read the whole thing into. Um, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is this gonna be filed with item twenty-four or is it filed twenty-five?
No, it's twenty-four. No, this is, this is, this is an amendment to Councilmember Bailey's original motion for a traffic study. Councilmember Hines is suggesting that the traffic study focus on stage two. Of the scope that was presented. Is that in a nutshell?
Yes. And so in this stage, the city engineers shall consider additional additional traffic calming options. And appropriate placement specifically. This report shall present a menu of options for council to consider, along with the placement of such man- measures and the approximate cost for installation. Including engineer costs for design, should it be needed.
Okay, so the, the motion is to request that the engineers. Um, in the study, uh, use stage two as their, their focus. And we have a second on that.
Sure, I, I, I just, I'm curious is whether this is an amendment or if this falls into maybe a new motion. I, I, I would, I would. Probably fall aside of suggesting, uh, voting on the original motion and then your motion separately. Because I, I think these are pretty distinct of each other.
Uh, we can vote on the original motion.
Yeah, I just. And this falls as an amendment, I think it's, I think it's kind of standalone, separate, separate apart from the current motion.
So if I made this mo- as a motion, because of the latter. Would it proceed first or second?
I think it would go second.
Okay. I so much all of that, stage two as a motion.
Point of information.
Yeah, try.
Just give one.
Um, to clarify, so before we've voted on the main motion that Councilmember Bailey brought forward. Um, it is my, we've been s- since, we've had two amendments that said it's being turned into not a traffic study. Okay, I wish, so we have actually changed the language of the main motion and. I would like us to agree to that.
Okay, well, just, so we'll call it, I'm sorry, that is my call. So, so. Um, as amended, Councilmember Bailey's motion is to discuss and take possible action. To authorize city manager to order traffic calming. Engineering judgment on, um. And from current fund balances, is that correct?
Okay, um, so the amendment that we passed, that was uh, Councilmember Pullies. Was to have no more than a ten thousand dollar judgments type study. For the five that are proposed on item twenty-five.
And, and your motion is broader, um, and is not tied to that ten thousand dollars.
But can't my motion still go forward with the exclusion? Of that sim- that mini study? Can it go forward? Because I wouldn't have voted for it if I understood that it would annihilate my main.
The, the Pullman amendment, I mean, my understanding is the, the Pullman amendment said we don't need a. Very expensive engineering study as defined and an engineering judgment will do nicely. On the, on the five, on the, on the rest of the traffic calming, um, information. That we need, that is your original motion.
Okay.
You know, so, so it stands, you know, as your original motion, um.
It will now be just. Um, smaller.
Or, or in addition to.
Yeah, but you were talking about the next slide.
Um, I, I suggested as an amendment that instead of. Proceeding with a traffic calming study, we kind of narrowed the focus down to this engineer review and report that we're talking about. And I presented stage two, those in this proposal, Mayor Pro Tempur Pullay shared with council today. Uh, narrowing the focus to give sound that direction, it's like this is actually what we want from this the engineer, rather than this other thing. So that's what we've kind of blazed over in that discussion, is that a traffic calming study. Is a massive collection of data and a report, and we have a lot of that already. And so we're kind of saying, we'd like to shave off that expense and focus on what's next for next area for us. Which is that engineering review and reports that we need, and we wanna narrow that focus down. That, that is what I'm presenting.
Yes, I might. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna kind of call a point of order, because I don't even know where to record that amendment, because we were in the middle of voting on other amendments.
Talking about Heinz's amendment?
Uh, I'm sorry, who?
You're talking about, about Councilmember Heinz's amendment? It's going to come back as a, as a separate motion.
Separate motion.
Yes.
So we still need to vote on the main motion.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to do. Trying to vote on the same, so my understanding of this is that, is that, you know, we can, we can take, we can instruct the city manager. To, you know, get those, get those funds, bring in the engineers. Um, and, and do a, a further study. And what the new motion is going to ask is that when they do that, and let's say it's the twenty-five thousand dollars that was originally done, or maybe it's fifteen. But when they come in and do that, that, you know, part of the, that they really take on this, this scope of work. And especially stage two as their primary work. So that's, that's the motion that, that Hines will make after we finish with your motion.
What I don't want to do, just make it clear, I don't wanna handicap the engineers into. Reviewing what's on this map, because I do disagree with some of those.
That's a separate, that's a separate deal. That's Pullman's motion that is.
All right, then, then I'm there.
Okay. So let's vote on the original, um, Bailey motion, uh, number twenty-four.
I.
Councilmember Bob Hammer.
I.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
I.
Mayor Pro Tempur Pullay.
I.
Councilmember Lina Bailey.
I.
All right, recognize Councilmember Hines.
I don't feel like I need to repeat all of this, but I, I am gonna focus on, I would like to make the motion that. When we go to our engineers, the focus be. This traffic calming study and report scope request that we have talked about. And to address Councilmember Bailey's concerns. One of the items we're requesting them to look at is judgment on viability of placement of yellow and blue phases. Meaning, they look at that map for the proposal and they check out the viability of those. Help us make priorities about which ones would be best, which ones wouldn't. And then provide that engineering judgment for final placement for any of the cushions we wish to proceed with. Because remember, none of this, we're not approving any of this tonight, except for hopefully the five initial ones, right? What we're doing is we're saying, when you go to do your traffic s- study, please.
Study, please focus on this, this is what we believe we need, we've identified. And they will look at that map and. You know, look at the city much like they would for any other devices, right? Because they're gonna be looking at the whole city and they would say, okay. We've got. You know, a bump here suggested, and then we want to. To decline that. We don't think that's a viable option. For example, one of the ones in particular would be the one on Champion Circle. That's coming down from the hill, that one might not be necessary, right? And it might not with the the. Slope of the road there be viable, right? But we are wanting additional speed cushions potentially throughout the city. We've made some suggestions, we're asking for that report.
Okay.
Ma- ma- Mr. Mayor, ma- ma- we actually have our engineer from Cape. Y'all, y'all haven't given them, he was, he did, he wasn't supposed to be here, he just. I don't know what he's gonna talk about, but this is our city engineer, and so he can address your concerns, or if you have any questions. This is the time to ask him.
Oh, can you guys, can everybody hear me?
No.
I just came here on my own accord in order to answer these kind of questions and. And be able to kind of convey maybe some of the things that we could do, so, um. So just kind of listening to what we're, what I'm hearing is, I do think that we can provide it what I would call a technical memorandum. I think a technical memorandum would be able to answer the questions. That you guys are asking, I I do think it would take about a lot of week at least. Because there's time to actually put the memorandum together, there's time to actually do some background and review. Uh, so I do expect that it would be forty hours, uh, and that's just. Without going back and. And and I do think that would be less expensive. Than a traffic study, um, and it would, and we would be able to just focus on exactly. What are your concerns, which are the five locations and looking at the the speed cushions and identifying. Uh, but in my mind, engineering judgment does happen to be more reactionary. Right, so i- it is on the engineer's response, you know, it's not as much proactive. When you're doing, you know, in design, for instance. It's, you're not, you're not reacting, you're not as much reactionary, right, so. And and that just means like, for instance, sometimes it's city permitting, right? You wanna, you wanna, you know, that something under that. You gotta submit that to make sure that you don't. It doesn't uh come down or anything like that, so that's an example of judgment, engineering judgment, it's just, it's something reactionary, so. I do think that since you guys have located the five locations. And if you guys can provide me that feedback, as well as some of the criteria that you're looking at. Uh, just for, you know, uh, some legality things that you guys are talking about. All that would help me be able to respond in a technical memorandum and say, yes, I think. Each location is suitable, the conditions are suitable for this uh this traffic calming measure.
If I could ask you, um, one thing, uh, at the risk of sounding like a broken record. I I mentioned again, the idea of having the four additional radar signs that we previously ordered, haven't done yet. But would they be a viable option perhaps in place of some of these things? Signage in place of speed bumps in terms of, there's a park here, slow down, that sort of thing. Um, if we were to have those four radar signs. As as a possibility, and they've almost been ignored in this conversation. Um, would they be helpful in in actually doing that traffic calming as well?
So you've mentioned that these devices are in in within the city, right?
We have four more that have been ordered that that have, we haven't gotten yet.
Can I answer? There is a radar sign right in one of these spots, but not at any of the others. And the radar signs that he's speaking of have already been allocated to the entrances, likely where existing speed limit signs are. They would be installed in addition to alert drivers entering our city to their speed.
So these are in addition to proposed speed cushions, Mayor Tim?
Let me just make a statement real quick, uh, we've had radar signs throughout the the neighborhood forever. And I sit and watch people go through them at forty miles an hour, some people pay attention, a lot of people don't, so it's time for the next step. And I I hope your position, Bob, is in that, hey, let's just do radar signs and forget cushions, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a problem with that, but I'm, I have the floor right now. Uh, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, we we came up with the motion in our amateur way of trying to address this, we've got the five locations. We said we're gonna ask for your engineering judgment, you're saying that may not really be the proper terminology. What would you have us asked you to do in looking at these five locations we've identified?
I do think the engineering judgment would be fine terminology, I think that terminology works. Which is why technical memorandum comes to mind, uh, where somebody is saying, hey, no, this is what we're proposing to do. Can you tell us whether that's a good idea or a bad idea?
Okay.
That in my mind would be engineering judgment, I do think a technical memorandum would be able to produce that, and I do see that being stacked.
So what we've done tonight, that that you're comfortable with what you're asking, we're asking you to do with regard to those five locations.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and and the only thing I could say about the radar guns too, I think it's really important that you see for yourself. You see people slowing down. I think that's really gonna tell you, you know, and I also think that maybe just getting with your local law enforcement. To see where those citations are happening, to see where the tickets are being issued. I I think, you know, if you get the like the the county sheriff, oh, you have, okay.
Yeah.
I I think those, I think.
Yeah, and we have, we have years worth of data collected, um, from all over the city on traffic counts, speeds. Time of day, day of the week, we have, we have tons of data that we can share. So, I mean, we we kind of know what we're talking about now, I, we have a radar sign, a temporary, you know, trailered radar sign set up. By our home right now, and it has been for a couple of months, and we've been watching that carefully. And, you know, it's like, and we're on the backside of of, we're not Wood Creek Drive or even Brooklyn, we're on the backside. And um fully two and a half percent of the traffic on our street. Um, is site is worthy of a citation, it's over thirty miles an hour and as high as. The range fifty five to sixty miles an hour. Um, on our little residential street, so so we know, we know what we want. We just want to be able to get. Your, you know, yeah, you're you're right, this is the best thing, or maybe we suggest doing this or a combination of that, so that's what we're after. Um, it's pretty simple. Heinz, Mayor.
Did you have any issues with this stage two that I was talking about moving out of the like larger study concept and moving into. Specifically looking at options for us in particular and identifying placement. Um, that stage that I I I don't have an additional copy and unfortunately I took my notes on it, so I can't give you mine. But, um. I just wanted to get your, because that's what we're looking at right now, that was on the table that's left. Either we move forward with this larger traffic study for the rest of Wood Creek past those first five, or we can. Request you to narrow that scope down to that which is outlined there for the rest of the city.
I I think that one. Is gonna be, it will be, um, you know, we can work on that. I just, I'd have to look a little bit harder at number two, um, because there could be more that goes into looking at each traffic calming option. For those locations and some of the research that might go behind it to be able to say that each one of these options. Is suitable or not, uh, because something that happens when you add traffic calming is. It starts to change the function of the road, it starts to change the function of intersections. And I think understanding what the effect is after, you know. There's some unintended, some unintended consequences as well, so that that sometimes those are the things that are looked at, so, um. I think. That they could be included in a technical memorandum, I do, I don't think, uh. You just might not get as much supporting documentation as you wanted a traffic calming study. Um, but. Yeah, it just that some some of the options that we have here, I just think it's important to understand the traffic conditions. And how how can each, how can, uh, any one of these or maybe a a combination thereof. Would actually be able to reduce what you're trying to do, right? Reduce the the whatever the violations are. Because you would want, you know, in my mind, you would want to look at. Uh, maybe examples of the locations that I would place these, I would want to know what kind of problems are there. Right, and then I I would want to be able to see how these options would actually make a meaningful difference.
Okay.
So, and and also, you know, some of this too, like with the. The people that you see are speeding, are they, are they people in town, like residents, people that you guys know, or is this people?
Lots of cut through traffic.
The first five speed bumps are on streets where people are coming through. The rest of what we're looking at would be in other areas of the neighborhood, some of which still see some cut through traffic, but have natural. Um, traffic calming measures built in in the landscape, like, uh, we have a lot of street trees and right of ways, like, uh. You know, narrow streets and that kind of stuff that already slows people down a little bit. Um, but what I'm hearing, if I can summarize for council and hopefully. Maybe we can move on, is that rather than stage two, this narrow focus, you could potentially do this, but in that scope of the the full traffic study. Because you believe a little bit more end up data collection and and research would be necessary, so you could still get this and do this. But you would like the freedom to do the full traffic study.
Right, because, you know, if if we were to recommend any one thing, we we would want to make certain that it makes a difference, you know. Uh. Especially when it comes to engineering judgment, because that's something that you do take a. Uh, legal responsibility, what you order, so you just, you you need to be able to back up that judgment with.
I'll withdraw my motion and you have this document, so.
You know, we can, we can try to tweak it with city manager, but the meantime, you're comfortable with phase one.
With phase, yes. You see, I mean, phase one.
Stage one.
Oh, stage.
Yeah.
I was looking at stage.
Yeah, we we voted on that, so I hope you're okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn. There's no need to discuss this in any person. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and just another thing too, you know, some of the differences between people violating. People that are trying to get lost and they're from here versus others outside. It's those people from outside, it's 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 out of finger, it's right, they're just not aware here, but here it's a habit, right? And and they're ha- it almost, it almost feel like you can, you can do these things as well, but, you know, making sure that law enforcement gets aggressive with that. You know, as well, well.
Thank you, we don't, we don't.
Because if you're trying, you're trying to reduce these habits that people have, just. Right, so, but I I think a combination.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We already voted.
Yeah, we voted on one of those, um, because we've got public comments on twenty five, I'm gonna go to twenty five. Um, and we'll recognize, um, Mayor Proton LeBron.
I worked on this public comments based on what I saw on the agenda. And some of it has changed after the discussion that has occurred here. My primary concern with item twenty five. It comes from experience and comes from past history. It comes from. It comes from experience of past history. We have had speed bumps, speed cushions in the city before. They were installed without any technical advice. Basically, my neighbor called and said, I want a speed bomb of Champion Circle and such and such, and he got put there. There was very, there was a lot of conflict and disagreement within the city because some of the other residents on the street. Had not, did not agree with that. Back and forth months, the the school bosses would not come into the city of Wood Creek because of the speed bumps locations. Uh, EMS and fire race projections. After months of controversy, they were removed. So I I believe that we need to look at the mistakes we've made in the past and not make them again. If the technical, when I look at the map, you're saying we're gonna put five. Speed bumps, we know where they should go. Well, not really, I think that is something, and. I don't just talk from what I think or what I feel, I research. I did a random sample of thirteen cities. In the state of Texas, and I looked at them in small, medium and large, including New Braunfels, San Marcos. Wimberly, although Wimberly planned to do it and then didn't do it. Uh, I also looked at Grand Prairie, Dallas, Austin, San Antonio. And all of them have pretty well-defined standards. And it's not when they're gonna do five or six or an overall, is 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 a standard that you follow when you're going, that you follow. When you're going to sta- uh, install. A speed bump or speed cushion. And I can share, Grand Prairie has an excellent documentation, the wheel has been built, it doesn't need to be reinvented. These cities are doing it correctly, ten of that thirteen follow a very similar process. Three do not allow speed cushions at all. So that's the point that I have my issue with twenty five. Is that the map that you have there doesn't show, these are very specific. One thing that these cities do that I has not been discussed is survey the residents on the street. Where the cushions are gonna go. You know, here, I may think that you need a speed uh cushion on Wilson Circle. You know, they come around with their little golf carts, a sixteen-year-old speeding and concerned. Well, in these cities, you can request a speed bump as a citizen. And it deals, uh, uh, the analysis proceeds. New Braunfels is one of the cities, they survey the residents, if seventy-five percent of the residents on that street disagree. With the placement of the speed bump, it doesn't. Get installed. I don't have experience as an engineer. But I do have experience with people speeding through the parking lot of my five oh one C three. Uh, store of which I am president of the board, and we installed speed cushions on a private parking lot. And guess what? We, a small store, we went and it was a volunteer, we did have an engineer look at what was the best placement. In our parking lot. Why is this critical? The speed bumps are considered obstructions in a city street. They are, they have been defined as obstructions, if you look at the T M L General Counsel. Document, which is very thorough document that reviews. And because it's an obstruction, there could be objection that this erection. Yes, you own the streets, the city owns the street, we can do, we can put this on the street. But we are not a gated community. And you have to have free trans- free transit through the city. You now have built or installed an obstruction that some may perceive as. An obstruction that impedes the free transit to the street. If there were to be an accident. If the school bus takes the the bump and a child is not secured by a. Belt, and we know our school bosses don't have it and they get injured, the city may incur liability. How do we protect ourselves? We protect ourselves by technical expert through a technical memorandum or study. And I can leave this with the city manager, it's very simple. There's very simple steps of what you do before you install a speed speed cushion anywhere. I don't disagree with traffic control. We ordered a traffic study in two thousand and nineteen from Jones Carter, May eight, two thousand and nineteen, it was completed. They came to the conclusion and recommended to council at the time, this with, um, Mayor Shield, I believe. That where they, that we do, we'll use options other than speed bumps based on the eighty-fifth percentile rule. At that time, when they looked at the data, eighty-five, they, the the conclusion of Jones Carter was that eighty-five percent of the traffic. Was traveling at or below the speed limit. We had discussions with, uh. He's not a council member, with Mr. Shell. He came and spoke to us about options, and he made some very good suggestions to our advisory roads committee. Including how to deal with broke collar, which would be in addition to speed bumps, you do the striping on the sides of the road, you narrow it. Creating a visual, mind raising, creating a visual effect. And it, it has been extremely successful in Hayes County. So what I'm saying is, this, people have done this. People have done this, have done it successfully. Item twenty five, I read the, I read it carefully, I looked at the map, I read it carefully. They yield it to me. I, I, I read carefully and item twenty five does not provide the documentation. That would prevent liability for the city. You have an obligation, fiduciary obligation to protect the resources of the city. And you must have some type of technical document, engineering judgment, whether it's one speed bump or ten or twenty. Before we have an accident and somebody loses the city of, of Wood Creek. I'm not against speed control, I'm all for it, but let's do it correctly. Question I have is consulting with EMS. Mr. Paul, I have minutes yielded to me. Uh, I will not exceed my minutes. And. Is, has, what, what communication has occurred with the school district EMS and fire? When we were considering the speed cushions and other traffic control, we met city councils and staff at the time. With representatives of three of them. And they gave us suggestions and in fact recommended even the type of speed cushion that would be most amenable to them and their vehicles. I strong, if you have not that, you may have done it, it's not in the agenda, so I cannot, I strongly recommend that you do it. Again, this is my concern, I have lived in this city for thirty-eight years. I have seen the controversy of the speed bumps, I have seen what happened then. I, we have tried, we have grown. Yes, we need to have control, but we need to do it judiciously. I will leave this document from Grand Prairie with the city manager, is an excellent document, I encourage you to review it. If you want to look at a smaller city, city of New Braunfels is ideal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor.
No. No, everyone yielded to. Yeah, they all yielded to. She took all the time. All right, um, we did decide to move twenty five up.
I would like to move that in light of this discussion this evening, we send the item twenty five packet. In addition to the traffic calming study and report scope request discussed this evening, two K frees. For reference during the traffic calming study, they do.
Judgment.
Okay, so the, the motion is to send the packet and information that we've discussed to the engineers. And so that takes care of, I don't remember, twenty five, so we've got a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Mayor Protempully did ask me to add judgment into that, so essentially just two K frees for their use. And, um. I, I don't really have any further comments, I think we've discussed it.
I think we've done really well with it.
Just a quick comment, um, I just don't want it to be limited to, um. These locations, there's some that I think may need speed control and some that seem unnecessary, we're going from zero to seventeen. On this, so I don't want them to be limited and, um.
What, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay.
What do you discuss, because this is, we're on twenty five.
Right.
Which is.
Sending this to the engineers, I just don't want their scope to be limited to just this report.
That's.
That's set up with the first one.
We've, we've already made that determination, all we're saying is, instead of debating twenty five. Yeah, which we already have done. Um, just send the information to the engineers, you know, as part of their, as part of their judgment. That's all we're doing, right?
You say information, you're talking about the, the I T S solutions catalog? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
We're talking about, okay.
I, I said the packet under twenty five.
Okay.
And the traffic calming study and report scope request that we made. Because one of the requests K frees made was to understand the criteria that we're using in our request, and those are both highlighted in this packet. Um, and, and the packet, it addresses that red, uh, the yellow and blue phases are not. First or primary and that they're just being considered, and it's pretty clear that we understand that they might not be viable, so I don't think it's limiting. Nor does it say we jump from zero to seventeen.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to send the packet material of twenty five. Um.
Fully seconded.
Right, fully seconded, and, uh, if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna vote on. Vote on the motion.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Brent Polley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, I'm going to, um, do another little, um. Agenda juggle, because I know we've got a mom with kids that is interested in, um, number seven, eight and nine, so I'm gonna move seven, eight and nine off the consent agenda. Or not off, but consent agenda, but we are gonna take them up. And Bob, you wanted to take these up out of the consent anyway, right? So we will, uh, we will take, uh, seven, eight and nine under consideration.
I move that council approves the events requested by the community garden organizers and waives all permit fees.
I second.
With seven, eight, nine.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just taking them all together.
Here, I have a couple of quick comments, I didn't have a lot to talk about, but there was at least one or two. First is, um. Is the use of the bathrooms in, at, at city hall, and then perhaps that would not, um. Be a great thing for us to be able to allow the general public to.
To public building, Bob.
It is a public building, but it would, it perhaps would have to be monitored, um, because they're going into our city hall. That's the first, that's the first thing, and, and other than that, uh, and so I make a motion that, that we take out the, the use of the bathrooms and that we would get, uh. Some, a porta potty for each event.
Let's just vote on it.
Um, yeah, I would leave that to the event organizers, you know, to, to make the, the right, the right calls.
Move, move with the organizing.
Cheryl, you wanna say a few words? Speak right into that microphone.
The question is, it, it seems that we would be using the, the bathrooms at city hall to do that, and, and, and basically we're just allowing the public into city hall, and if there's no monitoring of those bathrooms at all. Um. Uh, it seems like there should be some sort of monitoring, uh, pretty much if, if city hall is open, whichever part it is, whether it's the right side or the left side.
Absolutely, and we've done, um, some volunteer hours at the garden with city hall, uh, after, or at city hall after hours, and we were, uh. Councilmember Hines came and she was given a key, she locked up, we cleaned up. Um, and she would be on site for these events, so it would be monitored, um, and it's citizens, it's residents here in the neighborhood that are gonna be invited.
And is that for all three events or just, just one or two of them?
For all of the community garden events, they are centered for the community, we're just trying to create an opportunity to, um, keep the garden alive since we are in stage four and we're not able to plant right now.
I am gonna make a request, I did not give the councilmember Deborah Hines a key to city hall, so that makes me assume that she was loaned your master key, there are. I would make that request that, that not be loaned to her, that is assigned specifically to you, and there are other keys that will access only, um, that side of the building.
Available then for the events, that'd be great.
Right, because if, 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 if I'm. Under the belief that a master key is going to be loaned out, I will be working all three of those days. During the event to make sure the city.
Well, that was, that was my judgment, and I think it was fine.
Mayor, may I? I volunteer to be at these events to unlock city hall, clean up the bathroom and lock it, it is a public building. The porta potty expense seems unnecessary, unsightly and stinky whenever we have a public bathroom. All of the major offices with any private information can be locked. All of city hall is under camera, I would never access a room without permission. Also, as an elected official, there is no information at city hall that I could not access, but I would never do that, and my integrity should not be questioned.
One more, and then we need to move on.
For volunteering to do that, and I think that if there are any other citizens that we're concerned about this, that, that perhaps they're concerned with today's last.
I just gotta say, I'm really happy you're doing this event, it's a good thing for the community, so thank you so much, and we're gonna make that happen, and I don't know what Bob's problem is with the bathrooms, but I'm sure they'll be fine, so I'm anxious to vote yes, and thank you for doing that for our community.
And I do wanna just say, it is a free event, so it is a not for fro, not nonprofit, not for profit, sorry. Um, so it would, we'd be paying out of pocket for this free community event when we're getting everything else donated for a porta potty.
It's not like food events.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we're taking seven, eight and nine together, uh, call the roll.
Council, councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Brent Polley.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Forward to participating in this. Yeah, I, I am, thank you. Okay, God, we do have, we do have other guests. Um. And, uh, and there's gonna be a, a bit of a, um. Bit of attention, we're gonna hear from, we're gonna hear from the attorneys who do the finalists for our city attorney position. Um, and then we will retire into executive session, um, to discuss. Um, and make a, and make a decision hopefully, and then come back, so, um, it'll be a good break for folks, um. When we, when we retire, but, um, but I am gonna start, um, with item number twelve, and that's the presentation to the Wood Creek City Council by, uh, Denton Navarro.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
Um, my name is Charlie.
How, you've seen it, how do you think we are? You haven't left yet.
This is, that was, uh, one of the most organized Robert rules of thought, Robert rules of order following discussion I've ever seen in my twenty-two years of practicing municipal law, so. You got to the end of the road and I, in a, in a polite, uh, we disagree on certain things, but not by being disagreeable kind of way, and that's always nice to see in today's environment. Uh, my name is Charlie Zek, not, um, Kenny Rogers, as I'm accused of being on, at times, Kenny Rogers is dead. Uh. I'm with the law firm Denton Navarro Rocha Bernal, I'm, I'm honored to be a finalist, uh, with this fine group of lawyers here. Um, uh, regardless of your decision this evening, you're gonna get a good law firm, um, to represent you and, in, um. In getting traffic calming devices and other things. Um, Denton Navarro's been around for thirty-three years, Lowell Denton, um, was the city attorney for, um. College Station, and then he became the city attorney, uh, for San Antonio. And, uh, as city attorney for San Antonio, he believed that he wasn't getting the type of quality legal services that he thought municipalities should, should get. And so when he left the city attorney's office in San Antonio, he created this law firm. He created this law firm as a boutique law firm initially just to do litigation. Um, Lowell Denton is a, is a litigator, he's, um. Uh, focuses most of his time on litigation and collective bargaining type, uh, civil service issues. However, over time, um, the law firm has expanded in its scope, uh, we now provide and limit our services to only local governments and provide. Um, local governments any service, uh, with a few limited exceptions that they need. City Attorney Services, General Counsel Services, Litigation Services, we have a planner on staff now, we've had a planner on staff for about a year and a half, and so we bring planning services to the table. Um, but when you, when you engage us, um, excuse me, I'm not sure if I'm in the right place or not, uh. And that's all we do, uh, we don't, um. All we do is represent local governments, we don't represent developers, we don't represent citizens. Um, and so there is never an issue of a conflict of interest with respect to the representation of our clients. I've been represent, I've been practicing municipal law, uh, since two thousand and one, I started out as the city attorney in-house, uh, for the city of New Braunfels. Um, I was city attorney, uh, New Braunfels as their sole lawyer for about four years, and then I hired an assistant city attorney who was there for about a year after I left. After I left, I was recruited, uh, by a law firm in Austin. Um, and Denton Navarro asked if I'd come work for them, and I did, and I've been with them ever since. We have four offices across the state of Texas, um, Austin, the Houston area, the Rio Grande Valley and, um, San Antonio. We have twenty-two lawyers, and all, again, all we do is represent local governments, we bring a very deep bench of local government lawyers to, um, your services. And one of the things I really like about the lawyers that we have, um, is we have lawyers that have other life experience, uh, other than just being lawyers. Um, one of our lawyers was a city secretary for seven years before she went to law school. Two of our lawyers were police officers before they went to law school, uh, one of our lawyers was a journalist, uh, before he went to law school. Lot of our lawyers worked in-house for municipalities, um, as employees, so we know and understand. How your tax, how important and vital your tax dollars are and how difficult they are to come now, by nowadays. And so we're cognizant of ensuring that the best lawyer is on your situation, who's the most efficient to get your job done in the most efficient way with the best legal advice that you can get. And they, those lawyers having been in-house, having served in roles and, uh, in, 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 um. In cities, different roles other than lawyers, I think brings, uh, a lot to the table. I, I don't know, really know what to say, other than that, I think everybody probably read our, um, you know, our proposal, um, we are easily researchable online. I hope that you called our clients, uh, we're city attorney for Wimberly just down the road, hope you spoke to them, I think that they're very happy with our services. Um, as are the other folks that we represent, we represent about forty-five cities in the state of Texas, um, currently as. As city attorney. And then, of course, um, we're special counsel for multiple entities across the state where we just get hired on a case by case basis. And so I think we bring it all to the table, again, uh, no matter who you choose, you're gonna, given who's sitting at the table over here, you're gonna get a, a good lawyer, I just happen to think we're better, so, um. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, oh, and I want to apologize to the mayor, the mayor Protem, the original committee interview, I, I was scheduled to be on vacation. Uh, my law partner, Dan Santu, has actually been, was the in-house city attorney for Abilene for eighteen years before he joined the firm, been doing this longer than I have. Um, I think aptly filled in for me in my absence, so, um, I apologize, it was a, my wife would have killed me if we, if we had not left to go on that vacation. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we did give, we did give the council, um, access to proposals and notes from interviews and, uh, so they. Had a good deal of background, are there any direct questions for Councilor Zach?
I, I just have one, I, I have had only one really, may, okay, two kind of. Bad experiences with city attorneys from my own opinion and what I've seen.
I have two for the record.
The first one was, was having a city attorney who would sit, this is not Roger, this, this is not Mr. Gordon, um. Basically would sit in the entire meeting and not say a word, not offer either unsolicited or solicited. Um, and I was kind of new to the city back then, and I was still amazed that that occurred. Another situation was one where, uh, the city attorney uttered words somewhat like, well, you can do what you want to do. Which to me is. Which to me is not a good answer. From, from, tell us what the law is and let us go from there. So um, I hope.
That's my philosophy.
He's at the risk of being stopped at or whatever else.
Yeah, so we, I, you know, whoever, if, if whoever attends your meeting, whether it's me, whether it's one of the other associates, we, if we're hired, we would work that out with the city manager and the council for determination of, of attendance at meetings. But whoever, whoever does that, we work out the ground rules with the, with the client, with the council we happen to be with. I have some that, that, you know, they, they don't wanna hear from the lawyer unless the lawyer is asked to be heard from. And I have others where they're like, Charlie, if you, if you, if you see us going down a path, you need to let us know that we're going down a path. If you see that we're floundering, you know, um, help us out. And, and we do that. So we, we work within the ground rules that you set for us. And, and we're happy to work within those ground rules. I would say this just one thing. Please don't ask me policy questions. Um, I'm happy to give those offline, but y'all are the legislatures. Uh, we are the lawyers. Our eth- our ethical obligations actually state that as to matters of policy, we should, you know, stay out of those. Um, and, but you know, to the extent I have knowledge and experience behind the scenes and you, you know, I might do that, but on the dais, y'all get paid the big bucks to uh, make these, these hard decisions.
Thank. Oh, go ahead, Ben.
I, I just have a quick comment. First of all, both these law firms are, are excellent. And uh, I'm really, really happy to have you guys come down here and spend all this time and watch us argue for a couple hours. But uh, thank you so much for that. I will say that you got some big shoes to fill. I've known Roger for a long time. He's been our city manager, not city manager, city attorney, uh, and sometimes manager. City attorney uh, on and off dating way back, and he and I go way back. We've been to war together and uh, he's been a real gift to our community. So you got big shoes to fill, man.
I've known about twenty years now. I've known, I've known Roger about twenty years.
Yeah, he, uh, one thing about him, he's a very hard head. I think you figured that out.
I could, I have some stories.
I hear you. Only question I have for you, Mr. Zach, is uh, just looking at your, your fee structure on the litigation hourly rates. Those, those look a little higher than what I would expect in Hayes County. Um, even in Bear Travis County. Are, are you guys flexible on that? And this may not be the proper forum to discuss that, but is there flexibility on those litigation rates? Because we'd like the idea that you can turn from being a city uh, attorney into helping us with the litigation end like Roger's done for a long time.
Sure. So um, I would say we'd have to wait and see, you know, when those came up, we could remove those rates from, you know, from the fee structure. And if you happen to get sued and it's not a covered claim. Now remember, if we're your city attorney and you get sued and it's a covered claim, then your insurance carrier risk pool is gonna pick that up and you're not gonna have to wor- worry about um, about paying, you know, us for direct hire or another lawyer for direct hire. But if you get sued and it is a, and it, it necessitates uh, a direct hire, we can always negotiate those rates.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. And should we stay or should we go? Or, man, I'm gonna stay to watch Frank, but after that.
I mean, we will be in executive session. We'll come out with a um, with a decision I would, I hope. Um, and um, and you know, and it's not really gonna matter whether you're here or not. Still, still gonna be the same decision, so.
Gotta know when to pull them, right?
That's okay. I'm Colonel Sanders, so we, we can go hang out the uh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Frank Godisa. And I'm here tonight with Austin Beck, one of our senior associates, and Jesse Lepus, one of the partners. Uh, it, Charlie's right about one thing. Either firm, you're gonna get an excellent uh, law firm to do your city attorney for. Uh, I like to say Dent Navarro is our friendly rival. Uh, when we have a conflict, I call Charlie. When Charlie has a conflict, he calls me. So you're going to get a good firm. Now, I disagree. I think we're a better firm, but you know, that's where we go. So um, let me tell you a little bit about and I have a little bit of a, of a, of a, of a presentation. Basically, our firm's been around for sixty years. Uh, John Davidson started the firm, and John Davidson is still working at the firm. Uh, he loves doing municipal utility work. He's been the primary lawyer for Brownsville Public Utility, Curville Public Utilities uh, and other utilities across the state of Texas. That's his forte. Um, we also are a leader in providing city attorney services. We represent governmental ends, mostly cities and public utilities. We also represent special improvement districts, public improvement districts, but they're all governmental ends. We too do not represent developers or individuals against it. The only time I've been in a lawsuit against a city is when I'm representing a city against another city because they have controversies amongst themselves. Um, we have offices in San Antonio and Austin. We have twenty-six attorneys, fifteen that do nothing but municipal work. So we also have the deep bench to provide you services. I will tell you that whoever's assigned to this, if we were to be awarded, would be the lawyer you see ninety percent of the time. Okay, we will not be switching lawyers with you. Now, I'll give you examples. Robstown, Robstown is one of our cities. Robstown is near Corpus Christi. I cannot make their meetings because it's a night I have other meetings. I still do sixty percent of their work. I do virtual conference calls and email modifying their contracts, modifying their ordinances, responding to their needs. But I'm not the attorney at their, at their meetings because that's the same night I have a conflict. There have been times where they say, we really need you, and I'll have to send someone to that other meeting, and I'll go. But there's, those are the things you're gonna get from our firm. You're gonna get a note, a, an appointed attorney who you're going to get for the ninety percent of your meetings and your work. But there's that deep bench to provide assistance in anything else you may need. Our objective is to provide you legal services responsive and at low cost. We know cities have tight budgets. We know you need answers quickly. Now, one of the things we're gonna ask is who do we respond to? Do we respond to every council member? Do we respond to the city manager or just the mayor? I've had cities that complain about the legal fees, but they had no rules as to who to contact the attorney. And they're wondering why the fees are so high. So that's the first thing we would ask and retain is who do we get our assignments from? Who do we respond to? We provide services as city attorney to fifteen cities, but we provide services just as to cities doing other work. For example, I'm the attorney for San Marcos Ethics Violations. I'm the attorney for the city of San Antonio for the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission and their Civil Service Commission. Just like Charlie said, that Lowell Denton was city attorney of San Antonio, I was city attorney of San Antonio. I give Lowell grief because he beat me by six months as the youngest city attorney of San Antonio. But I respond, I survive seven years. So again, we are here to provide you legal services and we're here to provide you any legal service you may need with regards. Uh, we have experience and training. We provide training to officials in open meetings, open records, ethics, procurement. Any trainings you need, we have provided in the majority of cities. Um, we have clients, we've, we've provided municipal court services to. I know you currently do not have a municipal court. If you establish municipal court, you have a law firm that has experience with municipal prosecutors and handling municipal court. Um, whether you're a court of record or not a court of record, those are decisions that you, the council have to make as to which way you would like to go if you do decide to establish municipal court. Um, one of the areas we're also uh, highly trained with is ethics. Um, besides being a professor for twenty years at St. Mary's Training, Public Officials on Ethics. Um, I provide ethics services to the city of San Marcos, city of New Braunfels, uh, city of Kyle. Uh, because they call and ask because of ethical issues, either with a public official, appointed official, or an employee situation. So we have those services available for you as well. Um, if you look at the slide on page five, you'll see. And those are individuals that are available to provide you services. Besides myself and Austin uh, as primary city attorneys, Jesse is a primary city attorney and also a real estate expert. Uh, Justin provides real estate services to the majority of cities regarding deeds, fee segments and so forth. Uh, Lee Reed is our employment attorney, who is able to provide services on personnel matters to, to cities. Uh, Richard Linder is certified construction lawyer and helps cities with construction projects and issues. Uh, Molly was also a city attorney for various cities, and that's one of her main uh, duties. Patrick Linder is a board certified water attorney. He is our water expert. If cities have issues with water, that's who we refer you to. Uh, Patrick is the expert with regards to water issues. Justin is a backup with regards to employment and also is learning to become a city attorney as well. And Chelsea is a go-to. She's the infielder who plays both second base and shortstop and, and helps us with whatever issues we have. So again, Y T D R G, we have the legal experience. We know you have budgets, you need quick responses. We're available either by email, by phone, text. We respond as quickly as possible to your services and needs. Uh, we believe we offer you the best services. Uh, but again, Charlie and I are friendly rivals. Uh, we've known each other for twenty years when he was a young city attorney in New Braunfels and I was the old guy in San, the city of San Antonio. So um, we know that either firm will be, do a great job. We just believe we'll do it better. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
I guess I have the same questions for you as I have for them. The courage to speak up when, when things get kind of hairy and giving us perhaps answers that we don't wanna hear.
I'm not shy to, to interrupt and say, I think you're going in the wrong way. Or I'll admit as the mayor and council, this is an issue that I think we need to go to executive session to discuss. Cause there's a last thing an attorney wants to do is give legal advice in open session. If I really think you're going the wrong way and I think you may not be taking my advice, let me tell you in private, so what I, the, the good, the bad, the ugly, and if you decide not to take my advice, at least the public doesn't know the advice I gave. One of the things that used to drive my wife crazy is like, she would read the newspaper and say, city attorney did this and this, and she goes, but you told them to do the opposite. I said, I know, but I can't say that because that's the, I had to privately tell the advice and be, you're the client. You accept it or not accept it. And whatever your decision is, I will support it and I will fight for it. You know, but that's, that's our role is we give you advice. It's your duty, your responsibility to either take it or not take it. But whatever your final decision is, we're there to respond. Now, at other times, our job is to base our decision on the law and the facts. We do not play politics. Just like Charlie, we do not play politics. And that's why I am proud to say, we've been city attorneys for some cities for over twenty years because we don't play politics. Our decisions are based on strictly the law and the facts. Now, if you say, I wanna get to goal A, and this is the way I wanna get there, and I tell you legally, you can't use that to get to goal A. But let's look at options to get you to goal A legally. And so we'll try to come up with options. And a lot of times we come up with good options. There are times though, there are just no options that we can get you where you wanna get to. So we'll talk about what other options are available.
I prepared questions for both of y'all, but y'all have already answered all of them. I did have one come up in your, in, with you specifically. Are you currently representing any of our utility people, Aqua, PDC specifically?
No, we represent only publicly owned utilities. Yes, we do not, we do not represent privately owned utilities.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank, thank you both. I mean, it really um, was a fascinating um, exercise and experience um, for, for us. I'm, if I keep. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to take a second. I had the pleasure of meeting Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim at our initial conference, but my name's Austin Beck. I'm a senior associate with David Centrelli, Remo Garza. Uh, everything Frank said is exactly, if he wasn't here tonight, that's exactly what I would have been telling y'all. Uh, but I would be when he references the associate that's gonna be there ninety percent of the meetings, that would be me. Uh, and if y'all have any questions for me, I just wanted to let y'all know that I'm, I'm here and since Frank was able to make it tonight, I was happy to let y'all hear from him about the firm, but as far as the day-to-day goes, you can uh, interact with me and if anything required involvement from another attorney in our office to be listed, I would be the kind of the middleman, you know, making sure that all of that is done and it's backed and all properly. That would be my role, as well as just handling the meetings themselves. So. Thank you.
Thanks, Austin. Thank you. Alright, there are no further questions. Um, we will go into um, executive session to discuss the selection of a legal firm to represent the city of Wood Creek under um, five-five-one dot oh-seven-four, the code on personnel matters. We'll be going into executive session as eight fifteen. We can go to the, we can go now.
Oh, you know.
Really? Anybody mind getting wet?
Do, do you wanna announce it?
I think.
I mean.
Did you have a question on, on item number three? Were there some edits on three?
I submitted what I would consider minor edits. If you would like me to list it to the meeting, I can. I did already submit them to staff, like pedagogical.
So if we can just correct those, if we can just correct those and I'll sign it when they're corrected. I made a note in the file.
I saw six. That's ministerial boom.
Ministerial boom.
I second approving one through six consent agenda.
Okay, so that was high and grammar.
And just so y'all know, i- if in case this ETJ issue comes up again, it's ministerial when the package is complete. If you guys take no action after forty-five days, it occurs by operation of law. With this one, I, it was seemed like, yeah.
Be done, be moved quickly. And thank you to Suzanne and Kevin on that. We're all, we're all trying to figure out something.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to other city officials who said, oh, they, you've already got one of those. So we're waiting, you know, so it's just like, and nobody knows what we're doing. We sort of set some precedent.
The, the thing that actually ended up working good, and I know you guys have a lot of time, the, the law for this one is the same for the law on the petition, the process, which I've litigated for fifteen years through red light cameras. And so we were able to just use those same, the same factors applied. I think Kevin and Suzanne have a really good understanding now if it comes up again.
My only request is, like, I realize materials came in late. So council can just get that advice or it's an email because right now it looks like if you just look at this packet, we're approving something that the last correspondence from the city is, this is incomplete.
Sure, I, I'll, I'll email it right now.
I don't need to see it now if you've confirmed, but just again, it's like public view sometimes matters more than reality.
Got it.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor seconded by council, by council member Heinz, seconded by council member Grummer, to approve one through six on the consent agenda, if we can. Take that down. Mayor Portem, Brett Polley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linae Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Roscoe, would you explain for the public just briefly kind of the, the rating scale and things that were used that, just for the meeting's purposes and the understanding of how?
Yeah, for that real quickly. Yes, we, and when I say we, it was city manager Rule, Mayor Protim Pully and myself went through six proposals from extremely qualified city attorneys. So we were very pleased with the results of, of that solicitation. We, after going through a rating period, chose four as finalists for interviews, for personal interviews. We interviewed all four with the goal of narrowing it down to two for tonight to make presentations that didn't go exactly according to plan because the two second place finishers exactly tied. And so we, we had to go through a, we just sort of said, okay, we'll just bring all three of them. And as it turns out, the, the third firm, which is smaller, we have more of a boutique firm that specializes solely on municipal law. They have a client that meets on Wednesdays. And so they, you know, and this is on them, you know, this is a, a star on their record. They said, you know, we just can't, we, we can't do that. So they withdrew a few days ago. And so, so it came down to, to then borrow and, and Davidson at all. And so we, in executive session, we just sort of discussed merits and the presentations. And it just, it seemed like, sort of, sort of everybody was sort of pointing in a similar direction. So felt like it was safe to come in and take a vote. All right, we have, you know, we, we do have a, a new rule that, you know, we're going to keep these meetings to, to three hours. So we don't have very much time left in order to get a lot of agenda items done. So I would ask your indulgence in keeping the debate concise at least. We don't have to have everything, you know, explained in infinite detail or debated to the, you know, to the last thing. I mean, you start repeating yourself, I will stop.
If I may help, I would like to postpone item twenty-six.
I did have one question on item six. To me, that item needs to be removed. Is that incorrect?
It does not need to be removed. It's actually a ministerial duty upon completion of a proper submission. The city council has no other option.
I understand. Was everything in the packet though, is my question.
Not in the first packet, the second.
Okay, so that was why I was like, I think it needs to be removed because it's missing items.
Oh, you mean, you mean in this pack?
No, I mean, yeah, it was because it.
Yeah, so, so, so I sent them a letter and they responded promptly with everything in the letter and, and they, they nailed it.
And it's in this.
I, I don't, I don't believe it's actually in the packet.
Okay.
Yes, the stuff came in, I believe, after the packet was complete. We got some material on Monday and then some material on Tuesday.
Okay, that was my question. I move that we approve items one through six on the consent agenda.
Did you have a question on, on item number three? Were there some edits on three?
I submitted what I would consider minor edits. If you would like me to list it to the meeting, I can. I did already submit them to staff, like pedagogical.
So if we can just correct those, if we can just correct those and I'll sign it when they're corrected. I, I made a note in the file. So we're good with that.
I, I saw six. That's ministerial boom.
Ministerial boom.
I second approving one through six consent agenda.
Okay, so that was high and grammar.
And just so y'all know, i- if, in case this ETJ issue comes up again, it's ministerial when the package is, is complete. If you guys take no action, after forty-five days, it occurs by operation of law. With this one, I, it was, seemed like, yeah.
Be done, be moved, moved quickly. And thank you to Suzanne and Kevin on that. We're all, we're all trying to figure out something.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to other city officials who said, oh, they, you've already got one of those. So we're waiting, you know, so it's just like, and nobody knows what we're doing. We sort of set some precedent.
The, the thing that actually ended up working good, and I know you guys have a lot of time, the, the law for this one is the same for the law on the petition, the process, which I've litigated for fifteen years through red light cameras. And so we were able to just use those same, the same factors applied. I think Kevin and Suzanne have a really good understanding now if it comes up again.
My only request is, like, I realize materials came in late. So council can just get that advice or it's an email because right now it looks like if you just look at this packet, we're approving something that the last correspondence from the city is, this is incomplete.
Sure, I, I, I'll, I'll email it right now.
I don't need to see it now if you've confirmed, but just again, it's like public view sometimes matters more than reality.
Got it.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor seconded by council, by council member Heinz, seconded by council member Grummer to approve one through six on the consent agenda, if we can take that down. Mayor Portem, Brett Polley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linae Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Report from the mayor. I've just been sort of on the phone and in meetings over the past couple of weeks. A couple of the high points is negotiation with tree folks to do a reforestation process on the, on the the pond area behind the dam between Cypress Point and the golf course. So we've been negotiating with, with Mr. Gambino and with tree folks. Following the application, it's still, you know, a year or two away, but the application has been approved. You know, to move forward on sort of doing the design. But, but the representative from tree folks and I have been exchanging, or not, we've just been, first I got sick, then she got sick. So, so we still have to go over and do a, do a review, but we're meeting with them. Of course, the attorney interviews and all the ranking was, was, took a lot of time and, and effort. Had a meeting with Wimberly, meaning, meaning the mayor, Mayor Portim and city manager, Commissioner Long, Lon Share, Lon Shell, about some of the items in the, in a proposed memorandum of understanding with Oakwood, Texas for what they will be doing in terms of, you know, fixing leaks, things like that. So that's, that's moving along nicely, having a good relationship with them. And then we had a conversation just a couple of days ago, council member Heinz and I, with members of their environmental team on some of the local issues that getting, getting fixed up. I think that was a very good meeting. I did meet with Pierce Jones, who's the owner of Texas Water Tanks, but I wanted to get some information about, about if we are to, to do an incentive program for our citizens to be able to get affordable water storage systems, rainwater collection systems, what that might look like. And so I wanted to tour their factory and dripping springs. It's pretty amazing. And, and they're very open to, to working with us if it's a, an incentive program. He's a, he's quite the environmentalist and quite the community guy that wants to see cities like Wood Creek do a, a better job. So we'll have some more conversation with them. At some point, we probably need to get some information from other vendors. But he's, he's quite open to coming and speaking at Arbor Day or whatever, talking about the value of rainwater collection and what can be done. And then my last item was just, I met again with Commissioner Shell earlier in the week on the, on, on just what might or might not be able to be done on the road, the, the part of Wood Creek that it, where our maintenance ends and it goes across the bridge and what could actually be ever done on the low water crossing. They don't, the county doesn't really have, they've looked at it before. They've talked to the owners. They don't have really an appetite for doing, uh, doing a condemnation or doing anything where it could be taken over necessarily by the county right away. But felt like a, a conversation with the owners just to sort of say, just sort of talk about, you know, what are the plans for the future? What are you going to do? If and when a flood knocks that low water crossing out entirely, et cetera. But it also tied into Joe Gambino and the, and the golf course and sort of the rules about operating a, a public road on private property. Like, for instance, you have to close it periodically, you know, to show that it is a private road. So, so anyway, it was, it was interesting conversation and it will continue and I'll have some more information as it, as it, as it grows.
I have a question about that. Were you able to establish a property line with that other low water?
We, we have to have a survey to do that. I mean, the, the, the low water crossing that you're talking about, you know, that actually spans the creek, that is definitely cyber laws.
No, I'm not talking about the bridge. I'm talking about that tiny little, it's cut, it's a really bulky part of the road.
So that, that's, that's Gambino. According to the plan, but there's still no survey. You know, it's like, if you trust Hays Cad, it's Gambino.
And I don't know how recently the county inspected it for safety, but as of at least two years ago, I had this conversation and they had basically said, this is a, not a public safety hazard at this time. If it becomes such, we have an obligation to step in.
Right, that, that was a lot of the discussion I had with Commissioner Shell is that, you know, when we do stuff with health and safety, you know, it's a different thing. I mean, then, and, and there's another, there's another caveat that if, if TechStop says, okay, well, I got two county roads in between and I need to be able to get between those county roads, you know, then TechStop can step in with funding and actually maybe even do the work. But, but, you know, sort of the bottom line was that this isn't really a good time to be, be doing any kind of hardball or, you know, tough discussion on, you know, what to do with any of that property. And that we need to, to just sort of play it fairly cool. And that we need to, to just sort of play it fairly cool. City manager, you got a report.
Very shortly, I want to thank CYJ for this past Sunday for the CYJ Fund Day. Had a great time. Good turnout, look forward to doing it again. Second thing is the road. Paving currently Alpha is repairing sub base to the roads. We have put out notices, it is on the website. We've sent out texts, emails. If you're not signed up for that, please go to Woodcreek TX.gov and sign up for text messages because we are. Sending out the emails and texts, also putting in my social media and our website of where they'll be paving. As I said, they're just doing sub base repair now. They'll do it for the rest of the week depending upon the weather. Next Wednesday is when they actually start paving the streets. And we got the schedule today, I believe, and so we're going over, make sure everything's correct. So we'll be putting that out shortly. About what streets, but it's basically two streets a day. And so we'll give everybody plenty of notice on when they're going to be on your street to pave and it will not. Take them long to get through the city or get through the streets. So there might be a little inconvenience, but it won't be the whole day. And that's all I have.
Question. My question is, we've previously discussed that. Deerfield is waiting for a grant, but that because we're doing the roads in advance of Deerfield being done. They might be looking at their road, go wait, why didn't ours dig it done? And we discussed this concept of. Well, we would send, the city would send out notices to all the residents of Deerfield to let them know, hey, don't worry. We haven't forgotten you.
We put up tons of information, it's on our website, it's, it's everything like that. If you want a specific. Door hanger, that's fine. We'll work on trying to get something out in the next week or so.
Now, we did specifically request for Deerfield, you know, a door.
Yeah, if you want something, we'll go up there and do it.
Thank you.
Water lines and whatnot.
Utility.
Water lines, cable lines, is there any problem paving roads?
Yes. The, the, the water lines and cable lines were not installed properly. They're not at the depth that needs to be. And so we've had. Three or four water lines, sewer line and a couple of cable lines. Cut. That's because of the depth that they were originally installed whenever they was originally stalled. We are in contact with Aqua, so when they do run over a water. Line, they are, they come out and they fix it. We had one on Parview late. Late yesterday, I think that it took them about two hours to come up there and fix it. It's just unfortunately how the streets were originally made, but we're working with Aqua. They're working with us and Alpha, Alpha has their number. The, the cable companies is the same thing. They're going to, they are not allowed to cut our streets. And so if there are lines that get cut, they can come put a temporary across the street. When they pave the streets, they're going to unconnect that cable so they can pave the streets. And then they will have to come back and bore underneath our streets in order for the cable to be hooked up. And we will not let those lines stay in the street for very long. For them to come out and bore. They need to get, there's a couple of places. I know there's even one on Wood Creek Drive right now. And that one will, as soon as the road gets done, that's my next thing is to make sure that all of those get buried that are. On the right away and those across the street. Correct, Alpha, Alpha or Spectrum, whoever's line we run over, it's because it's not, we have thirty six inches. That is supposed to go under and they are not even. Close to that. And when they are put back or when they do fix them, we are requiring them that they are putting them at the right depth.
Thank you. All right, I don't remember sixteen, public hearing, the budget for fiscal year twenty three. It is.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh nine dash thirteen.
We gotta. Close the public hearing first.
Anyone have anything to say? No, okay. Close the public hearing at nine oh five. All right, number seventeen, and I would recognize you as council member Heinz.
I, yeah. Yeah, I, I moved that we approve the ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh nine dash thirteen approving the budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four.
Thank you. I will attempt to once again to lower the budget in order to lower the MNO tax rate, thus saving taxpayers dollars. I understand that the bulk of the increase of this year's taxes has to do with the roads being repaired and the citizens' approved debt that comes with that. And that the county sets the debt tax rate for us. But I can see us tightening our belts when it comes to city spending on itself. I still. And still be able to give the citizens the city improvements that they've expressed that, that they want. All line items are found on page seventy nine of the packet. I will pause to allow the council members to, the opportunity to go to that page in the package. I move to amend. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four proposed budget as follows and reduce the MNO tax rate accordingly. City Hall Maintenance Line Item becomes four thousand. Cleaning becomes one thousand eight hundred. Office Supplies becomes five thousand. One thousand eight hundred. Office Supplies becomes five thousand. Office Equipment becomes zero. Printing becomes four thousand. And Advertising becomes one thousand. And then below that, inspections become seven thousand. That is a reduction of sixteen thousand eight hundred on this proposed budget. The MNO tax rate should be reduced to reflect this reduction.
Can you go through those numbers again? I'm sorry, I wasn't given a best notice of this.
City Hall Maintenance Line, four thousand. Cleaning becomes one thousand eight hundred. Office Supplies becomes five thousand. Office Equipment becomes zero. Printing becomes four thousand. Advertising becomes one thousand. Inspections becomes seven thousand. With a total reduction of sixteen thousand eight hundred on this proposed budget.
I'm sorry, inspection was seven thousand?
Advertising becomes one thousand. So that was my motion. Thank you. When it comes to the reduction regarding City Hall Maintenance, later on in this agenda, which might get postponed. You will see that I presented a grant opportunity to make, help make up the difference for this line item. Maintenance. I didn't actually, it's if you.
You had to get this first. You have to win the green.
Then it appears to me that, that this is a. It is an exercise in budget cutting to create something that, first of all, we didn't know anything else about in the past. There may be other ways of. To create a general fund instead of by. Tearing into our, our budget possibilities. I think that what we have for the budget is reasonable and practical.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with it. It seems like we've had, you know, how many meetings about this? And since the numbers we've come at, it seems kind of like a last minute. I don't know. Effort and I, I don't understand the backup for that. I, I think the numbers are fair and, you know, I, I. I, I don't see the basis for this and plus it sixteen thousand dollars. I mean, what, I don't know what difference that's really going to make with the taxes, you know. So I'm, I'm in favor of the budget as it stands, as it's been presented tonight. I'm sorry.
Aside from the maintenance for City Hall, because I was under the same impression that that was for rain barrels and maybe we could get even more rain barrels. The city that's exciting through grants as well. The other ones, just. Because I was kind of trying to catch up here and looking at the numbers. It does look like. City Hall expenditures grew a little bit beyond what we've actually done spending. And so I don't think that these are unreasonable. Progressions now, and I, I do know that we've actually talked about a couple of these in the meeting. But the numbers never really reflect that adjustment because we never made a very specific motion to change them. So, I mean, I, I don't think these are inappropriate suggestions, because if you look at, for example, like cleaning, I know that y'all wanted to hire somebody more specific. But the proposal that. Was made is in alignment with the numbers of what we've been spending. And so I know that you wanted to get more frequent cleanings. But we have been existing on a lower budget. And then if you look at, you know, office equipment, we've talked about, we don't have a planned expenditure there. If it's, or if something comes up, so that's not a wild thing to kind of leave in like more of like a contingency basis. Printing. You know, we've only ever spent about four thousand. It looks like we got up to forty five hundred in this last year. That's something that I honestly would like to see less of personally, just because we're just throwing paper into the wind most of the time.
Isn't printing like the flyers that we just sent out?
We have a lot of printing that could be cut.
It is for, yes, for the flyers that we just printed to, to hand out about the drought. Printing for the flowers that we handed out on for the roads, flyers that we're going to give to those people at Deerfield. And also for the public notices that we have to give out to all the individuals in the city. Which we have to do nine hundred and two because that's the houses that we do whenever we do. Public notices for newspaper. Yeah, thank you.
I'm not saying we need to go one way or the other. I'm just saying the items proposed are not out of alignment with our existing. Last few years. So.
I mean, I don't, I don't care what you do. I really don't. But you have to remember that the last couple of years. These things were not coded correctly. And so looking at the coding, this is going to, this was the new coding. So when we start coding stuff correctly. This is what should have been in the budget last year. And the year before and the year before that, if they would have coded correctly. So like I said, I don't care, I mean. We'll, we'll do whatever you say. But that's how come it's, it's not the same as last year. And actually on the MNO, we've actually gone down by three thousand dollars. So we're actually spending three thousand dollars less than what we spent this year. So if you want to cut the MNO, which is fine, sixteen thousand eight hundred, our MNO would be going down by. Twenty thousand, we would be working with twenty thousand less, which fine we can do. But just so, just so y'all know that, that what we have in here, we're not taking more taxes. To pay for MNO, which is maintenance, we're actually taking three thousand dollars less.
I kind of agree that we have had this budget off several times and then. These are kind of new items. They are relevant to the operation of the office and it seems that. They know best of what might be needed for spending. On the advertising was. Does that have anything, what is the advertising? What? Is that anything like newspaper notices or is that in a different color?
Job postings.
The reason that number is, is up is because you have to remember that one of my charges when I first started was to go to RFPs. And so we've done. City Attorney. And we've done. City Arboretum. Co-administrator, but there are. We have, I have hardly even touched the contracts that we have to go through and, and get those, so. We'll work again with whatever you decide, but that's what come that, that money is increased is because of the advertised. Advertising of the different contracts that we have to put out.
Thank you. Or you finished, I'm sorry.
We're just one more thing. What about the twenty five thousand for the traffic calming study? If it's coming out of this year's budget.
It's in capital.
Taken.
It's in capital. It's in a different fund. It's segregated from, this is just, this page is just for maintenance operations. Of, of City Hall, just, just for us to function.
Thank you. So I do would wish to reiterate for all those people who have said that we have not addressed these things, I have repeatedly. Over the months, address these specific line items and ask for them to specifically come down. And some of them, interestingly, actually went up. After I've requested these things. So if to say that I have not addressed this over these last few months is. An absolute false statement. I have been continually asking for these specific things. And like council member Heinz said, we never made motions at these previous meetings. We were all asking for these things and then they were being put into these documents. But the ones I was specifically asking for, were not showing up in these documents. So this is not a last blastish effort. Well, I mean, it's last ditch in that today we have to approve it. But I've been repeating these specific line items over and over again in an attempt to lower the MNO tax rate. So this is brand, it's not brand new. I'm not suddenly springing this on anyone.
Shit, here you are.
We can hear you. It's, the audio is two way right now, so a resident at home is speaking and it's coming through her audio.
Yes, I didn't.
Yeah, we keep going.
Mr. Mayor, everyone has, has made comments already. I move to recall the question.
I'm perfectly fine with, with taking a vote on the amendment. But we have to have it recorded. Everybody loves a conversation. Voting on the amendment.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrick.
No.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Polley.
No.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
No.
All right, this is a minute fails. Three nays, two ayes. Move back to the main motion number seventeen. That council member Heinz moved in, council member Hambrick seconded.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
It may have, what were you voting on?
Voting on number seventeen on the button.
The main.
The main motion.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Nay.
Councilmember Bob Amber.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Polley.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, four ayes, one nay. We'll move on to number eighteen, discuss, take appropriate action on the resolution. Ratifying the recently adopted budget that raises more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of one. Hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred sixty six dollars. A twenty one point seven percent increase in last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year, one thousand eighty eight dollars.
I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
It needs to have the exact language. That is in the, it's page ninety two. The recommendation on page ninety two.
I move that we adopt the resolution ratifying the recently adopted budget that raises more revenue from property taxes in last year's budget by an amount of one thousand two, one thousand twenty, one, one hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred and sixty six dollars, which is a twenty one point seven increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from the new property added to the tax roll this year is one thousand eighty eight dollars. And I second.
Seconded by council member Bailey. Discussion questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it, four to one, the motion passes. Moving to number nineteen, a public hearing on post-tax rate fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, going into public hearing at nine twenty one. And going out of public hearing at nine twenty one. Item twenty. Discuss and take possible action on ordinance, approving the certified appraisal roll, setting the tax rate. And rest of the language, somebody will pull that and make the motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point two zero, correct? Which is effectively a twenty one point seven percent increase in the tax rate. If the tax rate will exceed the no new revenue rate, the vote on coordinates.
No, it's just a recommendation.
Sorry. I'll say it again. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of point two zero, which is effectively a twenty one point seven increase, percent increase in the tax rate.
Seconded.
Seconded by council member Hambrick. Discussion. On the roll, please.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Nay.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes four ayes, one.
I have to read the other two, right?
We have to vote on the other two because we have to approve the M and O and the debt rate in separate motions.
I move to approve the maintenance and operations rate of point one zero two three for fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
I'll second.
Second. Vote on the M and O rate.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Nay.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
That motion passes four ayes, one nay.
I move to approve the debt service rate of point zero nine seven seven for fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number twenty one. Discuss and take possible action on the Wood Creek Residential Street Mill and Overlake Construction, also known as two thousand twenty three Wood Creek Roads Project. Services for the city of Wood Creek, authorization number five for timber material, okay, say forty eight thousand six hundred eight hundred sixty five dollars and forty six cents.
This is a contract through K-Freeze and Holt Construction. This is for quality control on our roads. So next one, like week when they start paving, they'll be out there with Alpha testing the asphalt and making sure that what they're doing is that they're testing it. And then we have a third party that's testing it as well. And so this, this forty eight thousand eight sixty five forty six is actually coming out of the bond money that, that is in the capital project.
I move that we approves the face service document.
I second.
All right, motion by council member Heinz, seconded by council member Grummer on taking the possible, taking action on the Wood Creek Residential Street Mill and Overlake Construction. Oh, you can call, bro. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, if we were to take twenty three off at this point, we could attach to twenty seven council meeting.
Right, we'll move that.
Oh, just so you guys know, it's time to expense time and testing. So we're only going to charge just much. You just saw.
Right, thank you.
We have three minutes before we run out of time. And I will take one more item, number twenty two.
Yes, I'll, I'll go ahead with that. I move that we revise the level of participation of the city manager and/or city staff in all city committee and/or board meetings to, one, when they're specifically requested to attend, or two, when they choose to attend. With the exception of P and Z meetings, still want them to attend those meetings.
Who's second? So is that like?
Triple threat.
Who am I going to? Okay, so is, okay, Polly and Amber.
I'll make a quick speech. The basis for this is we've got, I think, seven different committees at least that did meet on top of the, the, the two monthly city council meetings. Having the staff attend or be required to attend all of those committee meetings, spreading them too thin, taking them away from their core business that they need to be working on. It occurs overtime on the part of Suzanne, and I just don't think it's necessary. We just ran a tree board meeting completely on our own, took our own minutes, and it went fine. So that's my proposal. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, ORC ran their meeting. They also support this. Their chairperson Jim Muller messaged me today before the meeting. He was like, for the record, it asks ORC supports this and respects staff time.
Um, so.
I just looked at my notes. I would like to request that P and Z be removed from this. That is a state mandated board and I, okay, I did it.
Um, so the city, city, city manager and the city secretary are currently not required to attend these meetings. They're only required to attend council meetings per chapter thirty. So my question is, since we are now actually adding an additional policy regarding that if a committee requests their attendance. Do we need to put this in chapter thirty? Because currently they're not required to go, to go to these meetings. But now we're adding the, the specification of if committee requests them to attend.
I, I think if the council request to be codified, we can certainly do that. But in the absence of codification, I think this policy can also.
Yeah, but so a policy would also have to be under a resolution, wouldn't it?
That's how this would be implemented.
So we're, so the actual motion is to request a resolution? Because I, I didn't see one in our package.
Sure, that was an estimate and, and probably you actually tried to do that.
You want to amend?
I move to amend to make the motion into a resolution.
And in effect prior to.
Second.
But I do agree in support of this.
All right, so we are, so we're voting on the amendment to present this item number twenty two in the form of a resolution. Preferably at the September twenty seventh meeting, right?
I mean, if it gets voted, I can, I can just draft a resolution. I mean, it's not going to say anything other than exactly what y'all just said. We don't need to bring it back to the council.
Okay.
All right, so let's go on the, we do need to move on the amendment.
Correct.
So let's do that. You can go roll.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Thank you. That passing unanimously. There are two items, look, they're Grummer's items on, on grants. I'm going to go ahead and use my discretion to let you speak to them.
Thank you. I'm going to postpone item twenty six to the next meeting as the deadline's further out. But I would like to discuss item twenty seven, which has a but shorter deadline of October thirtieth.
Want to make a motion?
I move that we assign the creation of a project and writing of an essay for applying for the quadra, quadra tech grant and then applying for the quadrotic grant before the October thirtieth, twenty twenty three deadline. I'm just going to, thank you.
Second.
And I'm just going to let you have read the packet and not reiterate the packet.
Do they have some cheap parts?
Who, can I have a question?
Yes, please.
Who is, who do you want to do this application? Is it Grant Works?
The, no, Grant Works, this is a, it would be somebody here or the city staff. Or that's why I kind of made a list under my recommendations of, do we hand it off to the tree board? Is the tree board interested in this project? Is, you know, would they want to write the essay, et cetera, et cetera?
Given the close timeline, I would volunteer to do this.
And I will join you.
But I would like some direction for council as far as which
Yep.
direction to apply for, because we have a menu here.
Yeah, that's why I presented it.
Do you have any grounds?
My beautification projects, of course. I I think the beautification projects would be the broadest possible, simply because it could be applied throughout the city in a variety of methods. And it might give me a little bit more leeway in, in writing that essay. And we could maybe work with city staff and Mayor Rasco to identify the next beautification project. I know right now on our, on our hands is Oak Will at Stonehouse, but we are looking for a project for twenty twenty four essentially. So we could kind of throw our heads together and do that with council's approval unless you all have something specific in mind already.
Yeah, and they would be specifically towards like water wise native plantings. It's, you know, it's, it's that kind of conceptual concept for the grant.
Oh, I got an idea.
Pollinator garden, et cetera. Go ahead.
The gazebo, the triangle. We could put some plants, you know, be. Yeah.
Yep, because if you're going to do that, I might want to recommend taking that to the parks board.
It's a green space, not a park.
It's a right away.
Green space. Yep.
So if, if the two of you are willing to do the essay, do the, the grant, it seemed to me in, in reading the quadra tech materials, that, that the beautification thing seems to be more up their alley.
I will call out and not, that will be a statement.
I would say, I would say, you know, to reach out to both Pat and Iris. And say, we are looking at doing this really, you know, benefits, you know, both of your groups. If you have any input, please share. Just courtesy call.
All right. I'm going to have to call the previous question. Y'all made an amendment and didn't, and voted on the amendment and not the main motion and then rushed onto this item.
On what?
So you, the amendment that you voted on.
Resolution thing, I'm a jerk.
Yeah, you voted to make a resolution.
We didn't vote on the main.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So this needs to be clear line and I mean, you're rushing to get done on time.
We'll go back to the motion then.
Thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Thank you Suzanne for bringing that to our attention.
All right, so let's, we can wrap up on twenty seven then.
Yep.
Everybody's in agreement on that? Take a vote on that and go.
It's too quiet.
Now we're awake again.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Ambry?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Foley?
Aye.
I move that we adjourn.
I enjoyed the last nine thoughts. Good vote.